I have 7:03 PM. It's Tuesday, February 6th. This is the planning board meeting. And we should just identify ourselves as a couple of names I don't recognize here. So I'm Brian Murphy, the chair.
Ray Cook, Planning Board member.
Anne Bardine, Planning Board member.
Tim Cronin, Planning Board member.
Sue Brown, Town Planner.
There you go. Thank you, Sue. Okay. The first item on our agenda is a continued public hearing at 125 River Road, the Eagle Nest subdivision. And I do have some comments on that here. If I can get that out. So the hearing is open for that. And I see we have Dennis Greci, is it?
That is correct. That is Greci.
Close enough. Okay, sorry, didn't want to put you in.
No, you got it.
Okay. So we had notified you, I would say in mid-January, that there appeared to be an issue with the frontage at 125 River Road. And we had scheduled a site walk for Friday, February 2nd, and we decided to ultimately cancel that as well. So here's the situation. 125 River Road has frontage in two areas. The westerly portion of the lot is 148 feet point three, and the easterly portion, where you're proposing a subdivision access road, is 83.45. And I think that was, that number was derived from your plan. So that totals 231.7 feet. By moving forward with your plan as it currently stands, that creates a non-conforming lot for the existing 125 River Road parcel. And that's not a lot. Our building commissioner, Sam Jocelyn, has made that determination. And therefore, the current application cannot be considered as shown. And so we have a couple of options before us, probably three options.
What if I got...
Those that you're hearing are down there at the bottom.
Yeah, could you, whoever was talking, just turn off the...
Thank you.
So the options are the applicant can withdraw without prejudice, or we could vote to deny the application as it does not meet our zoning criteria. There's a third option that the applicant could perhaps somehow modify the plan. I'm not sure how the plan would get modified. I'm concerned about that approach because I suspect if there is a way to modify it, it would look different than what it does now. So in my view, a clean slate, if the applicant wants to proceed, once they figure out how to proceed, that might be better. But I don't think we are going to decide on all of that tonight. And I would like to offer that we should, you know, have a brief discussion here, but then defer and continue this hearing to February 20th, where we could make a firm determination on what the disposition is or the next steps on this particular project. Dennis, do you have any comment on this?
No, I believe that was an accurate summary. We were, I think we were notified sometime, or I think the question arose sometime in the middle of January. Sue was sending an email looking for some frontage information. I, you know, we, I think, assumed that the frontage had to be contiguous along River Road, which I think is how it's typically measured. But we did recently, probably sometime last week, finally get, or the final determination from Town Council and the Building Inspector that the two lots, although separate, do total greater than 200 feet. So therefore, it currently conforms to zoning. I believe that's generally the position of Town Council and the Building Inspector. And again, having just recently received that, you know, final determination, I think by the February 20th meeting, the applicant should have a clear path forward to provide the planning board. And I think our option right now is, as we started to evaluate the options, would be the third option that the chair outlined, which is to revise the plan in a matter that, or in a way that would make it conforming. And I don't think there would be material changes to the plan. I mean, I'll let the board be the, make that determination. But having gone through some preliminary sketches this afternoon, I think there's a way that we can, we can achieve or create a lot that's conforming and hopefully get beyond this issue. So we appreciate the cooperation and the patience of the board as we hopefully get through this in the next couple of weeks. And we do also understand that we may need to extend the decision date down the road as well. So the applicant's aware of that, and there's no issues with that. That becomes, we get up to 20...
Were you peeking at my note about the...
I was anticipating that. I know that Sue has mentioned that as well. So if, you know, certainly willing to work with the board to allow for a thorough review of any plans that we bring forward at the February 22nd meeting or following that.
Yeah, okay. Let me, I'll just take a quick, you know, see the rest of the board members. I think in general, yeah, we definitely want to just continue this and have you back in on the 20th, for sure. But any board members want to add anything at the moment, or?
No, I don't.
No, okay, okay. So, yeah, the only thing I, I guess it depends if you think you can go ahead and modify it in some fashion. We'll let you come back and talk to us. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I do want to remind you, there were some other issues that had been discussed, and I think I discussed them. And it has to do with perk tests and the concerns from the health agent. So that maybe, that matter will not necessarily go away. And that's also reason that the date would have to be pushed, pushed further out anyway. We haven't even begun to talk with the health agent about these concerns.
Yeah, I know that we have a peer view outstanding. I don't know when we're expecting that. And I do know at the last meeting, we brought up, the board shared their screen and brought up some comments from the engineering department. And I'll reach out to Sue later this week to try to get copies of those so we can keep those in the back of our mind as well as we're...
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's kind of, yes. I do want to say, you know, the application for this was for the complete subdivision plan. We, you know, regs often suggest that you submit a preliminary subdivision plan. And I just think that was unfortunate because some of this might have been tackled earlier in the process. But we are where we are on this. So I think that the, we could probably schedule you right again at 7 o'clock on February 20th. Does that work for your schedule?
I believe we're on the, yeah, it does. And I think we're on the Conservation Commission's schedule as well that evening. And that's also pending a peer view that the commission has retained. So there's a chance that that meeting is actually continued if the biologist cannot get out and review the wetland boundary. So we'll say the 20th works for now.
Yeah, we can set it for 7:00, and if you're tied up there, we can just continue, we can make it for a later time that evening if you're pretty certain you'd be available.
Okay. And when I...
Go ahead.
Sorry, with, if okay with the board, is it okay if the applicant and myself work with Sue and the Building Inspector as well just to make sure that whatever we're presenting at the 20th in its preliminary stages is something that Sue and the Building Inspector would also be in support of? I certainly don't want to come before the board with the proposal that, you know, Sue and the Building Inspector is not on board with.
I think it's more, the Building Inspector's the one who flagged this. So I think that's, I think that would be fine unless one of the board members are concerned. Sue really can't advise you on how to solve your problem. I mean, you may even need to consult counsel. I'm just not sure yet on this. But I would say we could work with you within the confines of our obligations. Ray?
My only hesitation here is that, you know, Sue's got a lot on her plate, and it would be outside, I think, our normal practices for her to devote a great deal of time here. I have no objection to you touching base with her and checking things left, you know, here and there, but I'm not sure she should be devoting a lot of her professional time to helping you get through the problems here when you've got your own resources for that.
No, I certainly wouldn't expect Sue to invest a lot of her time. Just again, just when we come up with a solution that we believe conforms to the zoning bylaw, so we don't run into the same situation where something's flagged. And again, the contiguous frontage at 125 River Road is still something that I'm kind of working through. Because again, the, every town we work in, I believe the subdivision regs in West Newbury as well state that it had to be contiguous. So the thought is that 125 River Road is an existing non-conforming lot. We're not reducing or diminishing that, that non-conformity. Therefore, you know, this isn't an issue. And I do believe that there was a meeting with the previous town planner for this project specifically. The project was, in some way, daylighted to the, or to the planning board in that early stages. So there was not a preliminary plan submitted, but there was a conversation with the planning, the previous planning director and the planning board.
I have the full picture of who died.
No, you're correct. But, so why don't we leave it as, I would move to continue this hearing to February 20th at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Members of the board, I'll vote aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Yeah, I can, yes, it's 5-0 in favor. So yes, I think that makes sense, Dennis, and see where you can, where you can go with this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Happy to meet you.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to, I'm going to be right back. I'm going to just hand off the nuclear football here.
It's adorable.
You got it. That must mean the other one is homework or something, I guess.
I think so.
Yeah. So we'll wait just a minute for Ray to get back, and then we'll take up the, an A&R application at 16 and 22 Church Street. Just wait a moment for that.
Would you like me to share the screen for that?
Sure. If you can somehow alert me when Ray returns.
Okay, yes, I will.
If you can see him.
I'll just, I'll just queue it up for that when he returns. Now I'll have to have John unmute himself.
Okay. Ray is back. So the next item before us is an A&R application at 16 and 22 Church Street. The agenda says a lot line adjustment. Sue, do you want to just give us an description? And then is there someone here? I believe I had read it said John McGrath's property.
Yes, 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 yes.
Sue, you're muted?
Not you. Sorry about that. I'm just trying to let John know that I'm trying to get his document up.
I presume John McGrath is going to speak to this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Hello?
Yeah, we're trying to get the, get it up on the screen.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have me?
We do. Hello, John, how are you? There we go. All right, so the floor is yours, John, if you can kind of talk us through this.
All right. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay. So in about, in the 2003, 16, what was 16 Church Street is now a site of growing, was an undivided lot of nine acres. And settling my progress estate, they made Lot 1 and Lot 2. And that was done through the connegor. In the development of Lot 1 and the made-for-new septic system, that was created, it was changed to become Lot 1A and 2A to put that rather funny-looking knot on the north, on the west end. And then you see a dotted line around that, which is a... For the health, you know, slope easement for the breakout for the leak field. With the current art and my plans for the remainder of the lot, I wanted to square it up. So this would be the, a second lot line adjustment for this basic Lot 1 and Lot 2, called 1B and 2B. And so parcel B is moving from 2, to the 2 group, A and B, to 1, or 16 Church Street.
Okay. Appears to be rather straightforward, and I understand evening off the lot lines looks cleaner. Other board members?
Yeah, I'm curious, John, why the offset of five feet that results in a 38-foot side setback to the shed there?
Yes, it has, it has been 33. In discussion with the owner of 16 Church Street, we're trying to provide some access, vehicular, and access, heavy equipment access to the leak field if need be, because it would be unavailable in the future circumstances of Lot 2B. So that was just a nominal thing. And I also squared the line on, there was, there was a kink in that line.
Yeah, I see that.
So I also squared the line. And the leak field, you can see this is titled as vent pipe. I wanted, needed 20 feet there to provide a decent vehicle access or equipment access as necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, I have a question.
Yes.
So, John, it's Anne asking a question. So given that little gusset that we've just discussed that's switching from one lot to the other, are the frontages shown on this drawing, in other words, the smaller lot is 153.51, and the larger one is 294.98?
That's correct.
Are those correct? And they account for that little swap of a few feet?
It does. That's five off of one and out of the other.
Tim or Deb, do you have any questions?
I don't have anything, Brian.
Okay.
I just, I just confirmed that, yeah, the frontage on the small lot is shown right now is 148.4, 148.49. So yeah, that accounts for that five feet. That would be the frontage after the adjustment.
Okay. I have no other questions.
I have no questions. I also have no voice.
Oh, yeah. You do not?
No.
Well, okay. We'll take that under advisement.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Anne, would you be so kind as to offer the famous A&R motion?
Yes, I move that the planning board, it isn't approve, it's what?
Endorse.
Endorse this drawing as one not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second?
Outstanding. All those in favor, Brian Murphy, aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Anne Bardine, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
I have a question of the board.
I didn't, just a moment, John. Tim, I didn't hear you, but I presume you voted.
Yes, I voted in favor.
Yes, thank you. The vote is 5-0 in favor of the A&R plan. Go ahead, John.
Is there a question?
Yes.
I know that it requires a signature on the mile out and transparency that the planning board offers. And I know that perhaps you don't, many of you don't get in. I presume it needs at least three people to sign this.
Yes.
And is there a chance we have had that happen this week?
Yeah, I don't see why not. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm in town most of, and probably, yes, I'm sure we can get that done.
So Sue could let me know if I could get it recorded.
I will do that, John.
And Sue, you've got the mile out there, right?
Yes, it is in my office, ready for your signatures.
Okay.
Good, fine, thank you.
I was going to drop in tomorrow anyway, so I'll bring my pen. Well, I'll use, I'll use yours better. Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you. Thank you, John. Take care.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Moving along, we have several items under our Housing Opportunities Initiative. The first is to set a hearing date for the MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District. This is a public hearing that would be required. Sue, why don't you speak to that and maybe tell us the last dates that would be available, and we'll go from there.
Sure. So I think we can, so town meeting is the 29th. The warrant closes on the 14th or the 15th. So working backwards from there, oops, working backwards from there, I think you'll want to, excuse me. I think you'll want to make sure that you have time for, to take any comments into consideration and make any changes. So my suggestion is to, you know, maybe look at the, either the early or the latter part of March for that meeting. And I leave that to your discretion. We have time for both of those to do the advertising, two weeks of advertising, which is required. And I would suggest that we do both the definitions and the MBTA in the same meeting. Because both of those will be warrant articles, and we'll need a public...
Oh, yeah. I would have no problem saying we should do it in the last, the second meeting of March. We don't know if we'll have the state review document returned to us, but I guess we would just have to deal with, you know, comments based on what we submitted.
Yes.
Okay. Does that date work for people, or people away, or?
What's the date?
I'm away the first meeting in March, and I don't know if I can attend.
I believe it's the 19th.
The 19th.
The 19th of the 20th.
The 19th is the second Tuesday, or the third Tuesday of March.
Yes, the 19th. That's fine.
That seems okay?
I'm, I'm planning to go visit my new granddaughter that I'll wake in Denver. So I may not be there. I mean, I may be able to zoom in from Denver. Would it be a Zoom meeting or a live meeting?
No, it'd be Zoom. Yeah, I'm also just thinking, you know, if it's as late as we can make it, maybe we'll have the document back and what. So I would say the 19th works. Sorry, Deb, but let's, we'll go with that and be optimistic.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
I did get confirmation from the state that we had submitted a complete application or a complete documentation. So they're not looking for anything more, so they're, they're just reviewing it now, so.
That's a check. It may not be a check plus, but it's a check. Okay. They're looking for the check plus, but, good, so. So the next is the site comparison matrix that, Sue, you've worked on. And I know Tim had some questions today, so maybe we should just call up, yeah.
That's great.
Excuse me, just, and again, I envision this, and next meeting, we can add, delete, do whatever we feel with this.
I'm going to try to make it up. Oh, sorry, I did the wrong thing.
Okay.
Nope, that's not it. Oh, gosh, I lost it. I will get it back one moment. Oh, gosh. Apologize, I'm having trouble with my computer trying to find it. I'm going to bring it up in the binder for the moment because at least in there, you can kind of see what it looks like. I think I found it again. Can you see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Get it. I was simply trying to make it bigger before. Let's not make that mistake again. But I wanted to go to the top so people could see what I've done. So the one that you have... So the one that you have in your packet, I've added a little bit to it because I've got some comments. Thank you, Tim. So what you see in the yellow now is information that I've added based on some comments. So I added the, these, I broke down the category of proximity to things such as the town services complex, retail services and the post office, the high, middle high school, and then potential access to future public transportation, access to public water supply, and added some information from that study, consistency with nearby development. And then the last one was build out potential. So I will send those along to you. I just kind of finished them up today after I got that information, but I wanted you to know that I'd made changes to the one that you might have in front of you.
Yeah, no, Tim, I thought that was a, a good comment.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, you captured them all.
Sue, you did a good job. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for that input. So I do want to say that, you know, what, what we've put here is, some of it is, I think, subjective. It was based on the comments that we got and whether it's, you know, whether it's factual, like some of the information that we got, like, you know, photography is more, topography is more challenging. Some of those seem fairly straightforward. But then when you're talking about sight lines and left turning, traffic may be problematic. I think those are things that may or may not prove out if, once you have a, an engineer look at them. So I just wanted to say that. These are kind of, these are the comments that we heard, and that's what's, that's what has populated this.
And that, that's exactly right. That's
Yeah.
Kind of just refreshes, you know, our memory and, and frankly, to a degree, you know, our own opinions. Having, having worked on different parcels in the, in, in town and whatnot.
This is great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, yeah, you can probably, at some point, just recirculate this, this adjusted document. And we'll continue, we'll talk about it again at the next meeting. I'm still feeling that we have some time to discuss, you know, one or both of these in terms of moving forward. I'm not, I'm not feeling pressure from other folks unless you have heard anything, Sue.
Right. I have not. Yep. The only thing, one of the things that Tim asked me to think about and kind of put out here, I think I, the access to water supply was pretty straightforward, although we may have forgotten. So I put that in there. But the one piece that I would love to have your thoughts on if you, if you want is the consistency with nearby development. So what that, what I thought that meant was, you know, kind of will it fit in? The only similar type of development next to the done, of course, is daily drive. It's somewhat similar, not quite as dense. And then someone pointed out that there are smaller lot, single-family housing on Maryland Mechanic, which is close to the NAP parcel. But I, I just do want your input if there's, if I'm missing something, or Tim, if that means you had other thoughts about this, or or something else that others said.
No, I think, I think you captured it. Yeah, it's, you know, it's just something that I think people do think about when they think about these significant changes and developments, so.
Okay.
You captured it.
Okay, great. And then the other one was build out potential. I think we touched on that in some of the other ones, but again, if you had different ideas about what this might meant, I'd be happy to have you.
Yeah, I think it's strictly as it's stated, it's really, you know, how many units can conceivably be located on, on the site? Knowing that we haven't done all the engineering and that yet.
Okay. Yep, all right, I'll add that. Thank you so much. Yep.
I did see a couple of typos, Sue, so you might.
No, you did not. I, you absolutely did not, Ray.
Oh, oh, okay.
Where is it? Because it doesn't.
There was, there was a goof instead of good.
That's a nice one.
That's a, that's a good one.
And right, right there, Main Street location goof for potential.
Oh, yeah, look at that. There you go.
And then there was, there was one near the bottom where we were just looking.
Okay.
Also, near the top, there was a proximity that had a few extra letters in it.
Okay.
Later, when you proofread, I'm sure you were, this is hot off the press.
This is hot.
In, in F28 outside is misspelled.
Yeah.
Certainly is.
No, this is good. It's, it's all about, you know, informing us and, and others about, about this.
Is this the misspelled word?
No, it's one of the yellow ones, to middle high.
Oh, I guess it is, yeah.
Although I kind of like it. I kind of like proximity.
It's a lesser function.
Minimalist word.
All right, so I will recirculate. I will recheck and recirculate.
Looks great. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Okay, and again, we'll, we'll chat each of our meetings until we're, hopefully, you know, get, get, as, as we move towards town meeting timeframe. So the next is the frequently asked questions. And Sue had started this. I, I had, I made a couple of suggestions, and then I think she circulated it to everyone. And again, this is also a, you know, a document, we, we, if, if we like it, I think we should go run through it. We can put it up now and then we can continue to add or, or whatever, but.
Can you see this okay?
Yes.
I'm okay, yes.
So by the way, there are about 60 articles thus far, so it may be a multi-day meeting. But I don't know the article number yet.
You know, zoning unfortunately is always at the end. And, and in a multi-night meeting, that's not a good thing.
Yeah, we could, we could ask for something different. I don't know if you could be successful, but.
Without going into the details of this, I will just say that there was a legal notice in the paper about the town of Newbury. I think they're having their public hearing maybe pretty soon about there. So I went on their website because it sounded in the, in the notice as if they had picked a site, and I wanted to see where it was. Now, either I didn't find it or they don't have it. I didn't see a map of the town posted showing that. But they have a document, it's an informational document, and if you go, their website looks a lot like ours. So the bar on the left has an MBTA communities option. It's not characterized as FAQs, but it's a very good informational document. So it might be worth taking a look at that side by side with ours and just seeing if we can, as we say, appropriate any good stuff that we didn't think of.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And this was actually, this was kind of framed after one, Westford, which Dodson and Flicker shared with me. So there is no new information here, but it's always helpful to see how someone words it and how they lay it out, so.
I'm sure they're all pretty similar.
Yes.
I, I, I like this document. I'm glad. Thank you for putting it together. On the, on the uppermost bullet item, I think you, no, no, the civil enforcement action, I think you're missing a, a opening double quote there, which I would put just in front of civil. So it says, may be subject to, quote, civil enforcement action.
And what is you want?
Quotation mark.
A quote in front of civil.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, if, if, if in fact we do want, I don't know if we want to make quotes around it.
Or take it out?
No, no, it's, no.
If that's a phrase in some state supplied document is what I assumed.
No.
You don't need the quotes.
You don't, you don't need the quotes.
Nope. Yeah, I know what this is referring to, yeah.
That has come up from, a comments from the Attorney General's Office.
Right, okay.
But it's not in a official guideline. It's, it's more of the, you know, it's the, the hammer.
It's, it's a small C E A threat is what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
I just said a couple of things. Sue, on why did the state pass the law refers to is a housing crisis. I'm fine with housing crisis, or you could say housing needs, you know.
I defer to.
Yeah.
Do we feel better with needs or?
I, I would think the word there would be shortage.
Shortage is good.
Shortage, I, I, I'm good with that.
That's neutral but accurate.
Yes.
Yep, I agree.
How about rental housing in here?
Specifically, you know, just noting that that is a potential. I, I only looked through it quick. Yeah, just so, because there's a lot of, it otherwise kind of infers these are all owned units, you know.
Yeah, if you go back up to why did the state pass this law? At the very end of that bullet item, you can say who cannot afford or do not want, and then right there I put to buy or rent.
Yeah, I, I think a key piece of what the state's trying to do is in fact rentals.
Yes.
It, it's.
And to buy or rent a single family residence.
Yeah.
Yeah, we may even want to find a place to, to hammer home a little bit more that this could be ownership or rental or accommodative.
Both.
Yeah, I think that phrase kind of indicates that.
It does indicate it. It's a little bit of an ellipsis. Sue, could you check that? I, I still think that, that census related.
It is 5%. I don't know why I couldn't, I changed somewhere today.
Yeah, it's 5%, not 10%.
It was 10% for other communities that had the.
No, 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 this is a different thing. No, this is different.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's, I did change it.
That one is. The one above it, I don't think you did change.
I changed it somewhere.
That should be 5.
Changed it in another document.
Yeah, it should be 5.
Made it in two places. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for catching that.
On the, the law does not require, last bullet item.
Yes.
I suggest that instead of saying any housing to be affordable, I would say affordable housing. I think it's, it's more straight over there.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I'm sure I can find someplace then to be, add the information about it could be rental or ownership.
Yeah, good. Thank you for putting in those meetings. You know, there was a lot of work done and, and yes. And that continues to be done. I, I'm just wondering, you know, you, you scan through this and the 87 units jumps out at you, yet the reality is that'll never get built. I, I don't know how we should.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should open that can of worms.
I don't see it as a, why, why do you see it as a can of worms?
Well, I think that if, if we put out information saying that we don't think it'll ever be built, I think the state might, I might think that might throw up some flags that we're just giving this thing lip service.
I actually think the state understands it pretty well. In fact, they, they address it pretty thoroughly in some of their FAQs. And state quite explicitly that towns are not required to provide services or utilities that aren't already there, so. I hear what you're saying. You don't want to say, na, 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 we know this isn't going to get built.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's, it's better just not to touch that in any written document.
It may come up.
And that's just, that's how I feel about it. I, I, by the way, can I make another suggestion on the line up above where it says MC mod regulations, Mcmod? And that's just to specifically add stormwater to the list of things. In, in the, in the, yeah, I, I see it down there, but I, I would put it right up there in the head, yes. Septic, because people are always worried about their basements flooding after a development goes in.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm still a little concerned about, all you see is 87 units.
I, I, I hear you. I, I'm sensitive to what you're saying there, Brian.
You know, all of our discussions on both where we, we outlined, well, you know, they could do, you know, the letter of the law on, on these parcels, but septic won't allow that. It's by bedrooms.
Right, but that would be a decision of the developer.
It, it, it would, I, I'm, but I'm looking to inform the, the, the voting public here.
Again, I, I think, I think in town meeting it could be done verbally.
Yeah, I think it can be discussed. Actually, isn't it 90 bedrooms?
It is, it is, it's 90, it's 90 bedrooms, and that's the, that means you're really in a, in a 35 to 40 units typically.
I think if there's a discussion in which we then cite the three other similar developments in town, and we should, we should have accurate numbers on how many units are in each of those places, Ocean Meadow, on and on, you know, the three of them, that, that's a legitimate thing to bring up.
I, I, I could also see putting something in here, Brian, where it, you know, there might be a thing, is, is it likely the full 90 bedrooms would be built?
I mean, you mean almost 90 units?
Or whatever it is.
87 units, yeah.
Yeah, 87 units.
Yeah, okay, 87.
I think I'd like to see it in as a draft, and maybe we could all see.
Yeah, okay, so let me propose this. Let me propose this. A question would be, is it likely that all 87, seven units would actually be built? And then underneath the bullet item could say, there are, any develop, any proposed development will face pragmatic challenges, including fire flows.
Soil conditions.
Soil limitations, to, topographic challenges.
Development of septic systems or something.
Yes, yeah, kind, kind of a bunch of things in there. And then, yeah, this would be, this would be the kind of the, the bullet item underneath it. So is it likely 87 units would be built, question mark? And then the bullet item would be any proposed, yeah, there you go.
I can work with that.
Yeah. Development will will face pragmatic considerations that are pragmatic challenges.
Including.
That may limit that that may limit the number of units that that end up being proposed.
Yeah, that that, yes, I think we can work with this. I mean, it it's.
Yeah, and then you could say, these challenges include soils, topography, septic, um, um, far water flows. Yeah, all that kind of stuff.
Wetlands.
Wetlands. Setbacks from, yeah, yeah.
Is it our site?
I think all this is good. Yeah, I I changed my opinion, Brian. I think this is good to have in.
Okay, no, thank you. So that the, uh, shall we now reread this and have it ready to go on February twentieth? Um, Sue, are you feeling we should have this out sooner or?
I think it's definitely helpful to have out before you have your hearing. So that we can, you know, when we kind of when so we can direct people to it. Uh, but I I think the twentieth is is fine, and I'm happy to, as you read it through over and as I send it to you, feel free to send your comments back to me.
Okay.
Let's take one last loop around so Sue can work and we can comment, and then we'll look at it on the twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, I I have ideas for one more thing to add down there in the potential bit. Yeah, I said, why these? Why these districts? And then, you know, there there can be a discussion about how all kinds of things were considered by the consultants until it came down to these as being the most suitable parcels. And then right after that, why was this district recommended? And there there you can say that uh, a number of factors were considered and compared side by side. So I think that can be in two line items. How do we end up on Main Street here? And then how did we choose this one over the other one? I I hope it's okay, Brian. I'm dragging that out a little bit.
No, 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 let's put it in there and uh ponder it over the next week.
Yeah, this is a good thing. Sue, so thank you, Sue, for putting this together.
Yeah.
Of course, yep.
Question about one of the bullets at the top of the the second page, and it says, um, you know, what is not required? And the second bullet says use of town owned land. I think that's generally true. I'm not sure if that's absolutely true if the town has determined to sell the land or make it available.
I think that says it does not require it. So a lot of people people have asked, you know, specifically, do we need to? Do we need to? Does it need to be on town on land? Or do they, they don't ask that, but they jump to the conclusion that it has to be on town land.
I see what you're saying.
And you know something that could be added to the fact? Would be a a question would be why not the Mullen property?
Yeah.
Because everybody, everybody asked that. Oh, there it is. Yeah.
Yeah, and that needs that eye rolling back explanation of disposition and everything.
Right. Have we gotten any confirmation about the fact that uh, a forty R cannot be uh, set up?
So a forty R, a forty R can be used, but the what what we, what I did find digging deeper in is that the most affordability that you can require, even with a forty R would be twenty percent. Now, normally a forty R can go up to twenty five percent, but the only way we could have had twenty five percent if the forty R was already existing. You can create a forty R. Um, I think what we're up against is a time constraint. And um, I I think I shared with you, did I share with you um, what Dylan had written up in terms of?
You did.
Um, yeah, I think I think something very similar to that. He kind of laid out why this, I mean, there are different programs with different um.
So do we want to, do we want an FAQ about forty R? Is that going to come up? You know, had that one in the past?
Yeah, that's it. We could. I could do a separate one.
That's another whole page.
Maybe that's just too much. But we shouldn't, we should have an answer ourselves.
Right, yeah, and I think this is really about
About this.
Given up options that it may want if they decide to put Mullen in another state um program, then it's giving up other options for it. Such as deeper affordability.
Well, I thought the the basic premise was that the town would have to sell the land, have it ready to sell.
It would.
Right, be even before this, this law is, you know.
Right, before it was considered, would be considered to be a compliant property, to be it, to be a developable property.
Right. Well, I'd take a take a stab at a couple of a couple of bullets here, and that'll be the thing we will chew on for the next two weeks. If you're.
Sounds great.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, I think we're, I think this is good. We're 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 very close. Okay, um, do you want to jump to the article request?
Look in my binders. Are you able to see that? Probably not. Yeah. Can you see this, or does it need to be?
I, all I see is your file, list of files.
Oh. So when the, we just are, the 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 select board requires that a request for a warrant be put up, so this was just loose. Just language to to get that.
Is that, is that, is that due before the twentieth or?
Oh, it's already been, it it had to be put in already.
Oh, was that in that pile of things that Angus had?
Yes, that that was all. Yes, exactly. Why can't I find it here? I'm so sorry.
It it was in the binder. I I I know I looked at it.
Right.
No, I saw it. Maybe it's called something funny.
I'm trying to find the binder on my, oh, here it is. Let's see if I can do this. This is the challenge of having one screen at home to do that. There.
Yes.
Let me just move it around a little bit so you can. Can you see that? Or does it?
Yes.
Yes.
You must have the, I just had to put in something that says, you know, why we're, why the town is doing this.
Right. Well, that seems to cover that.
Yeah.
There you go.
I mean, it looks fine to me, so.
Yeah.
The only thing that I would do, uh, and here I've got my editor hat on again, is I put Mc mod after multifamily overlay district. Why is there, why are we missing an M?
Str- M there, yeah, we're missing an M.
But yeah, with that, in.
M stands for multi MBTA. That's the.
And then what's the C?
Unity.
Okay. Well, you'll figure it out. All right, MBTA is the M. Communities is the C.
Yeah, there you go.
Love a terrible acronym.
And then, yeah, so after the word district there in parentheses, I would put Mc mod. Right. I mean, it's obvious to us, but I think that's that's good practice. Sorry if I'm being a bit pedantic here.
That's okay. And the rest was asking about if there were any timing or monies asked for for this, which there are.
That seems fine. That's a pretty straightforward one.
Okay. All right, on that. Okay. Unless there's other questions now, we can move on to the town planner report.
This must be really interesting why I find you right there.
It's a long one.
Right here, I think it's the same one.
Yep, here we go.
So Sue, I had a question. Is it the Attorney General's Office who reviews this? I thought it was some other housing thing.
No, it's the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, but the Attorney General's Office, I had been watching a seminar um, which I regularly do on on MBTA communities issues, and the Attorney General said they are not, um, they're not part of the review for the um, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, but they are interested in and and they offered for anyone to send theirs into their office for that informal non-binding review, and they they kind of looked like felt to me like they were asking them to do it because they they must, you know, they will see it in the end like they will any zoning, so it's why not give it to them in advance, so.
Okay, I I wasn't aware of that. Thanks.
Yeah, so I sent it into them as well. Oh, this is where I put in the information that that Dylan provided. That's right. So that was just kind of laid out why the Mullen property, why the first two properties, how they were chosen, or the three two properties, and then why the Mullen property dropped off the list. Questions or thoughts there?
No, we'll we'll, it it it's well done. We'll just have to have a copy with us in case, uh,
Make it a little easier.
Proceeds with uh, his uh, his petition.
Yeah. So then we did have the Housing Production Plan Meeting, and um, I didn't get a a final number, but there were a fair amount of a groups represented, the Select Board, Housing Trust, the Finance Committee, the Open Space Committee, the Housing Authority, first the Planning Board, and some people that I didn't know, some people of the general public, so. With that, I think one of the, some of the takeaways, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, at their table, a lot of people talked about the need for rental housing. And I think the takeaway at, um, or like, maybe Brian wants to say what the takeaway was from his his table.
Uh, well, no, I think we we've we've covered, it it's the frequent ask, we keep it start with very simple outline, and I I think we've done that. It was just evidence a few folks were just still very they didn't quite have the basics down, but you know, it's how, you know, how we get news out to people, you know, there's no no newspaper, there's uh, people don't believe whatever's on Facebook. Not that this doesn't even make the town Facebook.
Not yet.
Not yet.
We'd always send it out through X. How many, how many words we?
There you go, yeah. Yeah.
They'll have to find someone else to know how to do that. We did get Sony, the AG's approval on the non-conforming and the ADU pilot.
Wonderful.
They're all done in time for the next, the next go around. Um, I did put it, um, just want to kind of keep you um, up to date on ADU inquiries, and there have been some, and I actually had one today.
Oh, nice.
Was asking, actually, this was a, an engineer, because he was, he was asking about if we had setbacks for driveways from property lines, because there was someone interested in putting an ADU. And I think they were extending the driveway back to it or something, so. I should have made sure he understood that, made sure he knew that a new curb cut is not avail, is not allowed, but he wasn't asking about a new curb cut. He was asking about how close to the sidelines a driveway could be.
And what's the answer?
We don't have setbacks for driveways, only for buildings and things, so unless unless I'm missing something, so.
I think that's right.
You don't regulate that, yeah.
I I I agree, yeah.
And there's, there's no setbacks on uh, on small buildings too, like garden sheds and whatnot.
Right. If they're portable buildings, if they don't have foundations.
Or if they're less than ten feet high, there's a whole bunch of.
Interesting, though, nobody's building any ADUs quite yet.
Yeah, I think they're getting, they're preparing to. Or at least inquiring, so I think we're consistent with what other communities have found is that there's not a mad Russian, Russian, everyone doesn't put them in their backyard. So that's kind of it.
Great.
Well done, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving along, um, uh, number five, discuss alternate MVPC member appointment. So I don't know if you know, but um, I volunteer to prepare tax returns as part of an AARP program that's held at various senior centers around. I'm assigned to the Georgetown Senior Center. And that's on Thursdays, which is also the day that MVPC meets at eleven o'clock. And I'm busy every Thursday doing tax returns for a variety of people. Last year, I think I just missed those meetings, but I'm I'm feeling guilty and I I wanted to you know, see if there was some interest in in having an alternate member. I did discuss it with Sue to see if she'd be interested. It it's a Zoom meeting, also in person, but it's also via Zoom. And uh, it's, as I said, eleven o'clock, it lasts an hour, maybe an hour and a half. Um, they're voting on a number of things and and what. So I didn't know if there was another member that wanted to step up, or we would consider Sue's interests. There are several other planners that participate, you know, directly in, in this anyway. Uh, so, I wanted to throw that out there. Um, I, I would like somebody to, uh, represent for the February and March, and I may actually have to miss April as well, even though that's, it's non-tax related. So, that's, that's the deal. If anybody wants to, you know, Thursday is 11, every third Thursday, until I, you know, I'd be back for the May meeting, for sure, I think. I have some other vacation plans, anyway. So, do anybody want to say they'd rather do it, or do people think appointing Sue is a good idea?
I think, I think if Sue's got the capacity, that's the natural fit.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I, I told, it's a really, you know, you really don't even have to go there, you just do this, you listen for when they call the town to vote, and everybody votes yes. I've never seen anyone vote, vote no on, on, you know, it's just voting on contracts or, uh.
Have you had to shake things up?
The, the monthly expenditures, uh, you know, we approved all the checks, but it's, it's like a board of directors meeting, that's, you know, it's, it's, yeah. So, um, I would, um, I, I don't know if the, I don't know if the selectmen have to agree on this, we'll have to look at that. But I would make a motion to appoint, um, Sue Brown as the alternate MVPC, uh, Commissioner, here in West Newbury.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I think we're all 5-0. Well, Sue, congratulations.
Just a good practice to have an alternate member anyway, I think.
It, yeah, it, it is, and, and I, I just, you know, I know they always check to make sure they have a quorum, that's really the big, the big thing, that they, there's a quorum, and I thought, well, most towns have a backup, and, and we haven't for a wa, a long time. So, um, Sue, I'll, I can reach out to the Select Board and just see if they want to, you know, bless it, okay?
Sure.
Uh, I will send a note tomorrow. I was told that Chris Wile is our contact. Did, did you know that?
Oh, didn't.
It's a specific person? Wow.
Yeah, I, I got a, this is a while ago, and I haven't had any reason to reach out to them, you know, if I see Wendy, I'll ask her a question on this or that, but, I got a note from Chris, and he said, well, yeah, we, different members have been assigned to be the liaison on, on different, uh, tasks, and, uh, and so we got Chris. So, he'll, he'll be happy to have, have a note about something.
Perfect. Thank you, Sue.
Great, thank you, Sue, yep.
Of course.
I think I just got the package for February, I'll, I'll forward that to you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, um, let's see, moving along, the minutes, January 2nd and January 16th. If people have read them.
Can you all see that?
Yep.
Yes.
And Ray, did you get to, um, view this meeting yet?
Yes, I did.
Perfect.
So if anybody had questions, just speak up, uh, I, I didn't have anything on this. Appreciate the fact that Mr. Baker was like, he just wanted to give us a heads up kind of thing.
Very nice, yes.
Yeah.
We've developed a working relationship with him over the years, I think.
Well, you know, he's a town citizen who gives a damn.
That's right, that's why we work with him.
Move, we accept the minutes.
All those in favor? Ryan Murphy? And Tim, Deb, Ray?
Since I witnessed, since I watched the thing on video, I guess I don't have to abstain, I don't know.
Actually, I think technically you do.
Well, then I abstain.
Be, just from the other items. Well, it'd be easy if you're just abstained, okay?
I'll, I'll just abstain.
Perfect.
All right, do we have the January 16th?
I do.
I had an item that I thought was a little confusing, about midway down, Malcolm Barrios of 319 Main Street. The prior sentence, Ray is talking about the Knapp property.
Right.
Malcolm is talking about the Dunn.
Yes.
And I think somehow we need to just clarify that.
Why don't we say stated, the Dunn property has a pond, instead of the tree line?
Something to that effect, sure.
No, it's good. Pond. Yeah, there you go.
I think that was the only item I had noted. Okay, um, motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Ryan Murphy, aye.
Pretty good guy.
Tim, and I think Deb was, uh, Deb was absent, so abstained.
That's right. I was in Portugal.
We'll get an update when you can talk.
Good.
Yeah, next time, next time you go to one of those soccer matches, you don't really have to be as loud as the locals.
I thought it was the bullfighting. Um, let's see, what else? Correspondence, there was an interesting one in there from Groveland.
Really? Okay, let me do it, let me see if I can pull that up. This is by Groland.
Well, if you can't, that's okay.
Yep, right here. Oh, the battery energy storage system.
There you go.
Yeah.
I thought maybe we should just see what the hell they're writing about.
Yeah, in fact, um, Sam has been keeping me appraised of that, and said that it's going to be coming up. I have not gone to that site, but it's a good reminder that I should go to that, um.
Is he the inspector in Groveland?
Yes. Or if he's not the inspector, that's where he lives.
I, I, I'm pretty sure he's the inspector there.
He might, yeah, he might be. I know he's been working on that, so I've been, he's kind of been waiting for it to to work, to have a good framework.
Yeah, probably at some point, you know, if, well, we got a bunch of things now, but, um,
Right.
Yeah, he could come in and talk to us, you know, I about the, you know, how urgent the need is, is it, is it something that, you know, should happen between now until the fall, or whatever.
Did I share that? Or was I just looking at it myself?
Is this in regard to residential battery storage systems, or what?
No, this is the commercial, um, the battery energy storage systems.
Okay.
Uh, this, what I, I would imagine is similar to what, um, they're trying to do in back of All Saints Church.
Yes, yes, that is, that side of the battery storage system.
A lithium battery storage system.
It's interesting to me that, uh, the market is, has come along to the point where it's driving this sort of thing. You know?
Well, so many electric cars, so many people are converting to electric heat, there's, it's a huge uptick.
That's right, and actually, um, Sam was at this, I see it's Tuesday, February 6th.
Oh, there you go, okay. All right, well, yeah, so, anyway, I, I caught my eye. Do we have any other administrative details, or? We're, we're, we're okay. There was something on the, about the, uh, in, in the binder, about the, uh, goals of the planning board. Whatever, do we?
I have that.
Chatting about that or not? Excuse me.
So I just, this is cleaned up a little, so. Interesting, I can't see my changes in here. Only the red that shows I did change something.
Yeah.
Interesting. Did I include, was this included in your packet?
Yeah, I, the red line was, you know, the.
If you, if you click the review button.
Review.
So, yeah. That's normally where you get a chance to view everything, so, there you go.
Well, that's fun.
Show markup? Ah, well.
Sorry, I was unmuted. Try, uh, other than all mark, oh, all markup, you did that, okay.
I did.
Huh. Interesting.
Interesting, that's correct. Oh.
There you go.
There we go.
I'm gonna miss the improving roadway aesthetics.
You can put it back in, I just didn't know if it was at the top of your, top of your mission at the moment. I replaced it with resiliency and sustainability.
Okay, so that's gonna be, yeah, you'll fix the numbers there anyway.
Yes, yeah.
Were you thinking of like a Paris Boulevard, kind of like Brian?
Yeah, something, you know. Yeah.
Or maybe just get rid of the dead ash trees.
Hmm.
Oh.
I typically pick up a little trash when I walk my dogs.
Yeah, you're a good man.
You're our personal esthetician, I guess.
I, I was, I I didn't know if we should list all the things that we might be looking at here, you know?
I don't think we need to.
I can take them out.
Yeah.
Just future zoning amendments period would be just fine.
I, I agree so.
Because that list is going to change over time, like battery storage.
Yeah, we've had the marijuana thing, we've kicked that down the road so often.
How are those mushrooms working out, Brian?
You know, well, see, this is, this is the, yeah, I, I think, I read something that people are cooking with those somewhere or another. Some of this stuff is just a little crazy.
Do you want to keep the specificity of the Mullen property in there? Is that really what we're going to do, or?
Where, where was that?
Number.
Oh, I, I see it now, I'm sorry, yeah.
I would say, uh, you either strike it, or say uses of town-owned property.
Yeah, I, I, I would, yes, yes, I'd, I'd.
Yeah, I don't think we want to put a lightning rod on top of the planning board.
But I, I guess I'm.
Town owned should be hyphenated, and town should be capitalized.
Is that really something we should be talking about, though?
I don't know, I feel like it's either selectmen, or Affordable Housing Trust, or the school committee, or, you know, whoever the user would be. We don't generally push projects, we're more of a.
Yeah, I mean, how could we, you know, I think the question might come to us is, how could we make this work? We've been talking about this.
Fair enough.
If, if something's needed. But I, I'm not sure we want to be in the housing creation business directly.
Well, wait a minute, did that just disappear?
Yes, see how easy that is?
I mean, I guess, so I guess we're, what I'm, let me see. I'm looking at number three, engage community members. What about also, like, working with other town boards and stuff, is that, I mean, is that, does that go without saying?
It, but it would, that would be fine to put in there, sure.
Just add that, and then that in.
You want to add it to this one, or add it as a separate item?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know, I'm kind of losing my focus here. Sorry.
No, we got, we got the working with town boards below.
Okay, well, that's what I wondered.
That's on operational stuff, though.
All right, but maybe we, maybe this is the place, that's the place to add something, let's see, what's it say?
Can you get rid of that? There you go, thank you. Well, if, 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 town boards should be boards and committees, they're not all always a board.
Well, some of it is more employees, and, you know, some of it's Michelle and Sam and all that, too. So, I don't know. Oh, because we, I, I don't like number four, because it's not like we have been discussing any of that.
The business?
Continue, number four, continue to discuss and assess the potential, uh, that's not a thing we're engaged in, to, to my.
Yeah, I, I, I would delete all that.
Yes.
Business.
In the past, in the last one, it was, um, it talked about you were doing it for economic development of, in downtown, looking at that, so.
Yeah, but that was kind of a past, and it went on, you know.
Yeah, we, and, and we did with the whole sewer thing and everything, you know, and, and we did, and basically find it is what it is.
Right. Well, this all sounds very, um, dogged, but I think a lot of what we do is pretty dogged, you know? It isn't, uh, a lot of blue sky planning stuff, really.
Let's keep this as a, well, yeah, I'm, I'm losing focus again, too.
How about I send a clean, a clean?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, we'll, we'll. Yeah, we'll, no, again, is this a deadline item?
It isn't, no, this will just, well, it is meant to go with the budget, which, as we know, goes until close to town meeting. But mostly it's, we'll just update it on the webpage when it's ready.
Maybe on the 5th, oh, no, Brian's not gonna be here, but.
Well, you, you can certainly chat away, that, that's no problem.
Okay.
And just, I, I was in the other day and actually talking to Sue about the 125 River Road. And I told her, I said, you know, there's been a lot of chatter on the, one of the town's Facebook pages, West Newbury People or something, that the folks that have horses and barns and whatnot, got, I think, a pretty stiff tax increase.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that.
And the very, the little, people are upset. And there was some comment, you know, oh, should, you know, what is it, the right to farm or whatever, farming, you know, might help, and Sue clarified for me that that really wouldn't help anyone's assessment. This was a assessing decision that was made on, I think, the explanation I read was that they're, they're now taxed on what the property might sell as a horse.
What?
Property, as opposed to somebody buys a house with a barn and doesn't want to do horses. Well, that's too bad, you're, you're paying.
How did, how did they determine this classification? I haven't.
Well.
Falls under it.
I, I saw an explanation from Wendy who went in to meet with Christian. And if I get it right, he, he felt that it, it, they had been undervalued. And so he, they, they made an assumption on, on that these, these properties had not been, you know, I guess paying their fair share over the years, something to that line of thinking. We haven't heard the end of this, I just, I throw it out there just because I came across it and you, you may have other people that have horses talking to you about it. Ellen Alden was posting on it.
So somebody like that, a private owner who has a little barn with a horse in it, gets a tax increase?
Yeah, I'm gonna go, there's a woman down the street from us who's got a couple of, she's got a couple of minis and whatnot. And I wanted to just chat with her and see, but I, it sounded like it was across the board for horse properties.
It's very strange, because some of these properties are tiny, they're not, I don't know how you would, if what they want to do.
You gotta have it at least over an acre, you know.
Right, 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 but I mean, we're not talking about a spread that's going to turn into a horse farm and board 20 animals, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
If what they're, if what they really want is an increase in some kind of stable, isn't there a licensing or a fee for stables? Then that's what they should do.
Yes, yes.
What if you get rid of your horse, do you go get an abatement? The whole thing sounds very strange.
It, 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 it seemed a little odd to me, but again, as I told Sue, you know, you read stuff on these pages, you never quite know, are you getting all of the story or not?
I mean.
But it, it was interesting, there's, there's over 100 comments of this.
Wouldn't, wouldn't a proper action here would be to kind of everybody get together and everybody appeal together?
Yes, yes, and that was noted, although I think the appeal period has already passed. At least for this, for this go round.
Ask the Newton teachers, I think a little collective action might be called for.
So I, yeah, you may be hearing, you may be hearing more about this, yeah, not, not, you know, it's not a play, it's really just an informational thing.
Hmm, seems odd.
And Sue, and so I had said to Sue, you know, is this something we should take up? She says, no, that's a general bylaw, that's a select board matter. The right to.
The right to farm by law, I was talking.
Yes, yeah. I, I was mistaken on thinking, oh my God, they're gonna be picketing Sue's office. Fortunately not, so.
Haven't heard anything from anyone on that.
Although if, if everybody's too bored, I can post something on Facebook saying that it is the planning board.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. We're just sitting here looking for things to, you know.
And, and that if they've got any questions about it, they can take it up with Deb Hamilton.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, there you go. He's being conspicuously quiet about this right now.
I know, I know.
I know, I was apprised by folks at the Grange about the right to farm by law, I think I asked you about this, Sue, maybe a year ago. And so, yeah, they've got to take that up with the selectmen.
Yep, yep. So that's, that's all I have, anybody else have anything? No? Okay.
Meeting, the meeting schedules on the agenda, is there some specific change that we need to make? Or did that just get dragged from a previous agenda? Administrative details, meeting schedule.
Oh, I think that must have gotten dragged forward.
Okay, nope.
I'll make sure it comes up.
Yeah, we do have the change to March 6th, a Wednesday, because of the state election.
I think we made that last time.
On the 5th.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Get them off that ice.
No, actually, wait a minute. I may be home for that. If my flight lands on time, it wasn't a snowstorm, I should be home, but jet blue these days, who the hell knows what the hell.
That's adorable, Ray.
You know.
Where's that solid ice, though, because that's very suspicious.
That's Mel Pond, the ice fishermen were out on Sunday and, yeah, the ice is, the ice is pretty solid.
Yeah, yeah, it's, but a strange winter again, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, we will, motion to adjourn? Everybody's in agreement? Yes, all of us, okay. All right, folks.